We'll call the meeting in order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2023-05 from March 7th, 2023. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Ladies, please do.
My Father, from heaven, thy name can come. That will be done on earth as is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And give us our trespasses, and those trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
Entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we have a proclamation. We have a few proclamations. The first one is recognizing the month of March as Women's History Month. And we have Dr. Catherine Jones here. If you'll meet me at the podium.
How are you?
Good.
Hi, good to see you.
Good to see you.
How are you, my sir? How's it going? See you. Let's see it. Somebody's taking over our place.
No, look at that.
Who's this? It looks like you.
It's mine.
What is yours?
I'm watching.
Oh, I didn't see you put it up there.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Not mine.
All right. So, where were we before I did that? This is a certificate of recognition for Women's History Month. In February of 1980, it was declared by then-President Jimmy Carter that the month of March would recognize Women's History Month. Women's History Month provides an opportunity to honor the generations of trailblazing women and girls who have built our nation, shaped our progress, and strengthened our character as a people. Throughout our history, despite hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women have strived and sacrificed for equity and equality in communities across the country. Generations of Native American women were stewards of the land and continue to lead the fight for climate justice. Black women fought to end slavery, advocated for civil rights, and passed the Voting Rights Act. Suffragists helped pass the 19th Amendment to the Constitution so that no American would be denied a vote on the basis of sex. Congratulations on your first year anniversary as the Wycomico Commission for Women, and we are pleased to recognize the month of March as Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to speak?
Is that okay?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Wonderful. Okay. I first off want to thank the county council and also the county executive's office today because we are celebrating our one-year anniversary. And with that said, tomorrow documents International Women's Day, so I would love to have the county council, if you would consider, wearing our International Women's Day pins tomorrow to mark not just Women's History Month, but also to mark the strive and efforts of women throughout the world in trying to find equality. If I may hand those out, is that okay?
Certainly.
I have mine, yep. I have mine, yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might may just share, our bylaws were just updated and approved by the county council. Just wanted to let everyone know what the commission of women, what we do, what the functions that we fulfill. We identify inequities in laws, policies, practices, and procedures promoting remedies. We advise and counsel the residents of Wycomico County and all its government on matters involving the needs of women, especially those matters relating to discrimination or prejudice on account of gender. We celebrate and recognize the accomplishments of women in Wycomico County. We promote programs that will expand women's education and employment opportunities. We encourage women to seek leadership roles and elected positions. We educate women on the process of seeking political office, whether elected or appointed, and we work collaboratively with governmental agencies, private organizations, and nonprofit groups to bring about solutions to our concerns. I've also sent an email to the county council inviting everyone to join us on March 14th. It's called a BYOB event, which is Bring Your Own Baby event. It's a way in which a nonprofit organization has decided to remove the barriers for young professionals who have children to be able to maintain employment at their job site, and they can bring their children to work with them. So I invite you, if you would like to see how one organization is making a difference in removing the barriers for women in our community. Thank you so much for the proclamation. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Now, I do have to remind everyone who is receiving the proclamations tonight that they'll have to return them. If you could give them to Mrs. Hurley on your way out, because there's two council members that couldn't attend that would still need to sign those, okay? And Megan Outen, if you could stand for one second, because I want to recognize you. Megan Outen, who was up here earlier, this is your newest representative on the Salisbury City Council. Next proclamation is recognizing Endometriosis Awareness Month. Mrs. Shannon Hahnewald? Yes, there she is. Okay. Councilman James Wynn will be reading.
This is proclamation, Endometriosis Awareness Month. Whereas endometriosis is an inflammatory condition in which the tissue that normally lines the uterus grows outside of the uterus and can be found on the ovaries, fallopian tubes, and intestines. And whereas it is estimated that one in 10 women have endometriosis, which can cause severe pain, infertility, and dysentery, I believe. And whereas the Endometriosis Association began Endometriosis Awareness Month in 1993 to increase awareness and education about the painful disorder plaguing an estimated 175 million women across the globe. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the county executive hereby proclaim March 2023 as Endometriosis Awareness Month in Wycomico County.
First, I just wanted to thank you for the support that you've shown in the past three years when I decided to start this mission. My name is Shannon Pender Hahnewald, and I always make sure to put my maiden name in there because that's who I was and where I was when this journey started. I draw strength from it because everyone always says I'm stubborn, and I know I get that from my grandparents. They worked hard, they loved hard, and they supported hard. When I need strength to fight this disease and advocate for others, I always come back to how strong, stubborn, and resilient they were, and it gives me the strength and courage to continue doing what needs to be done. Endometriosis is a disease that affects all aspects of your life, emotionally, mentally, and physically. Endometriosis can take everything from you, and it did to me until I decided it was time to fight back. Fight for awareness, education, and support so that generations after me do not have to go through what I and so many other women have. Endo is a whole-body disease, and while the last two years I focused more on the physical side of things, such as infertility, excruciating pain, and other immune disorders, I have decided to bring more awareness to how this disease affects you emotionally and mentally this year. My pain started when I was 15 years old, and I started out as the doctor saying I had ovarian cyst rupturing. After that, my pain just increased, and the help and knowledge from the doctors decreased. My parents took me to so many doctors, I had more CT scans and ultrasounds than I could count, all coming back with the results of nothing. How was that possible? I was in excruciating, debilitating pain that nobody could seem to help me with. My parents started to believe the doctors that I was just trying to get out of school. And honestly, when I look back on it now, they didn't really have a choice. I had severe depression and anxiety because nobody would listen or help me. I felt alone and dismissed. The feeling of being dismissed and made out for people to think you were lying is a feeling I would not wish on anyone. They are feelings that I long ago buried and tried not to allow back into my life, but I know in doing this mission, I have to be completely honest and brutal, if needed, so our family, friends, coworkers, and even acquaintances can understand the feeling they share when you look perfectly healthy on the outside. When I was 17, I was at a point where I didn't want to live anymore. I was alone, tired, in pain physically and emotionally, and I was done. I was a shell of myself, going through the motions every day. Having the people who were supposed to protect and help me think I was lying about how I felt was so defeating. I decided one night I was done. I went and I got one of my prescriptions, and I took every last pill in the bottle. My mom just happened to walk in and saw what I had done. She called 911. They gave me the charcoal to get the medication out of my system. I didn't really think of how it was going to affect anyone else. I didn't have any feelings at that point. I also really thought, I just can't keep doing this. Nobody believes me. I'm scared, and I'm tired of fighting. After that night, my perspective changed. I don't know why, and I don't know how, but I decided I was going to fight. I was going to figure out what was wrong with me, and I wasn't going to let anyone else feel the way that I did for the past two years. Nobody should want to take their own life because of how people make you feel. It took me a long time to be able to let that anger and hurt go towards my family, but I realized they didn't have a choice. After five years, I finally found a doctor that would listen to me, and as soon as I told him my symptoms, he said, I'm starting to have endometriosis. Endometriosis, what was that, and why had nobody else even mentioned this to me or my parents? The only way to diagnose endometriosis is through laparoscopic surgery. We scheduled my surgery, and short enough, I had stage four endometriosis. That was the first of my 14 surgeries to try and help remove the lesions to help with the pain. The next obstacle was infertility. Growing up, you don't think about not being able to have children because that's just something that women do, but that wasn't the case. Knowing something was wrong with me and could prevent me from being one of the things I wanted most in this world, and that was to be a mom. The mental impact it has on you is debilitating. I felt not normal, damaged, and discouraged because nobody would want to marry me if I couldn't have children. Unfortunately, there are women who lose the mental battle with themselves over this disease. Many women have committed suicide because of the impact endometriosis has not just on you physically, but mentally as well. Endometriosis has taken so much from me. I've missed important dates and celebrations with family and friends. It took away my ability to have children like other women. It took a baby from me during fertility treatments. It is still a continuous battle for me daily. I am not the mom or wife I want to be all the time, the guilt of not always being a present partner for my husband, or the full-time hands-on mom I want to be. The guilt I have when I have to cancel plans with friends or playdates for my children will probably never end, but I try and remind myself that they still love me and support me even when I don't. My mission is to change this. We need people to listen and understand when we are talking about how we feel. We need not to be made to feel guilty because we have to cancel plans, miss time from work, or because we spend more time at the doctor than most. The more we talk about endometriosis, the more women and their families will know that they are not alone in this fight. It will hopefully give them the courage and strength to fight for themselves, not just physically, but mentally and emotionally as well. I want the word "endometriosis" to be known as well as if someone says they have an ear infection or strep throat. I know some women do not want to speak about this publicly, so I will speak for them. Endometriosis has no cure, only treatments. Some doctors will tell you to have a hysterectomy or have a baby, but that does not stop it from growing on other organs. Endometriosis has been found not just on pelvic organs, but on the lungs and brain as well. It is imperative that we all work together and support each other through this journey. My passion and drive are because I do not want anyone to go through what I have, and I have chosen to fight because you never know who is watching and learning from you. I always go back to the quote, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." I ask you to remember, just because someone looks okay on the outside doesn't mean that they are okay on the inside. If someone says that they have endometriosis, please remember this point in time, and you will hopefully understand a little bit of how they feel. Endometriosis affects each of us differently. It is a complex disease and requires numerous specialists for each patient. There are no two stories the same. I started a Yellow Day last year, so we are having our second annual Yellow Day on Friday, March 10th. If you guys would mind wearing the yellow ribbons that I sat there, or a yellow tie, it doesn't have to be the ribbons, anything yellow. And then you can post it on the support group Facebook page, or you can email it to me, and then I can post it to the event. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Hahnewald. Thank you. The next proclamation we have is recognizing the month of March as Professional Social Work Month. Vice President Baker will be reading the proclamation. From Ms. Jamie Manning. How are you?
Good.
And Ms. Chris Truitt.
How are you? Good to see you. Good to see you. Good, good. So this is proclamation, Professional Social Work Month. Whereas for decades, the social work profession has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. And whereas social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help elevate and empower people, giving them the ability to solve problems, cope with personal roadblocks, and acquire the resources they need to succeed. And whereas social workers are active in government, schools, universities, social services, social service agencies, communities, corporations, the military, and health and mental health care settings across the globe. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the county executive hereby proclaim March 2023 as Professional Social Work Month in Wycomico County.
Thank you. Every day in the social work field, these individuals work tirelessly to promote social change, social justice, and empower communities and individuals, and so much more. I almost wish this award proclamation could be given at my office today at Life Crisis Center this evening, like right now, because while Chris was able to join me, as you might have seen, she came in just from seeing a client, and there's so many more individuals back at Life Crisis Center right now, seeing clients, helping case manage individuals in our safe house, our victims of intimate partner violence, our legal team looking at the court docket for tomorrow, running through their cases while they're at their house, you know, trying to figure out how to navigate that process for victims, so much more, answering our crisis hotline. So while everyone goes home tonight, I want you to think what else they might be doing. They don't, they take the work home with them constantly, and this will mean a lot to them, just to go back and to thank you for acknowledging it, and I will gladly share this with my team. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Thank you, Ms. Bozick. Don't forget, the proclamations need to go back to, take your time, but when you, before you leave, it has to go back to Mrs. Hurley. Thanks. Mr. Mitchell, good evening.
Yes, this is a legislative bill 2023-01. It is an act to amend the Purchasing Manual, Section Rumor Number 4A2, purchasing procedures, small purchases, to increase the amount of purchases not required to be competitively bid from under $1,000 to under $5,000. And I understand that Director of Administration Lufman may have something to add to this and explain.
Over here for now, what we're doing is we're changing the public hearings just a little bit. I was called by a constituent who was concerned about the fact that we would have a public hearing before a bill was read or a resolution, and no one really knew much about it before the public hearing was held. So we agreed that it would probably be better to do a brief synopsis before the public hearing and then go ahead with the, with the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
I'm Pete Matthews, General Services Supervisor for the county. And basically, what we're looking for in this bill act is a time versus money situation. Right now in the county, we have 35 to 40 employees that are authorized to make a purchase over $1,000. Those employees are experienced employees that have been with the county for many years, with an average pay, including benefits, of roughly $65 an hour. All departments make these purchases throughout the year. If you took that $65 an hour and multiplied it by, let's say, four hours, that it would take you to get additional prices for a service just over $1,000, that's $260 additional dollars that it's costing for that product. If you've got 40 employees doing that once a week, that's $10,400 you're spending in employee wages to save pittance, maybe $200 a purchase. So it would take a lot of, a lot of our time to save nothing. Therefore, it would make streamlined things, make the purchasing process so much easier, faster, and more effective. If we could go to the $4,999 limit that we didn't have to take our time to spend to get additional prices to possibly save $100. We have, all of the departments have enough experience with various vendors that we know we can call somebody, get an honest price, and go for it. If that vendor can't provide it, we all, we all have other vendors that we can go to. It's not, we're not locked into anybody. It just gives us the ability to make a decision, make it quickly and efficiently for the best interest of the county. That's really what it comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. We appreciate you taking the time. By the way, I should note that the individual that called was Mary Ashanti. Mary, I think you're here tonight, right? Yeah, Mary always calls. She's always concerned about what best lines of communication there can be between this government body and the public as a whole, and she's constantly in communication with us to make sure she can improve that. So, Mary, we appreciate that, that recommendation, and Pete, thank you for taking the time. So now, at this time, we do open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 37-2023. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Legislative Bill Number 2023-01. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this legislative bill, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2023-01. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2023-01. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Legislative Bill 2023-01, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Legislative Bill 2023-01 passes unanimously.
Mr. President, would it be proper to do it by roll call since it is a legislative bill?
I would say so, except for we know it was unanimous, and we know that, is Shaney on?
She's on Zoom, yes.
Shaney, good evening.
She's muted right now. Tell her to unmute.
All right, so we do need that vote. Well, we don't need it, but we do want it. I was thinking about the roll call, but I kind of felt it was going to be unanimous, so.
I vote aye, John.
Great, there you are. Glad to have you, Shaney. So, let's.
I mute myself, Lauren.
Thanks. Legislative Bill 2023-01 passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Ms. Hurley, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. Next on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 37-2023. This is to approve the relocation of a portion of a forest conservation easement containing 0.92 acres on parcel 223, tax map 30, owned by Salisbury Ventures LLC. The easement will be relocated onsite at the one-to-one ratio, and a public hearing notice was posted on the county's website stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM. And we have Casey Dyson here, if there's any questions.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Dyson, how are you?
Good evening.
Yes, thanks, if you don't mind.
Good evening. I'm Cassie Dyson, environmental planner with Wycomico County.
Could you bring the mic down just a bit? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I'm Cassie Dyson, Wycomico County, environmental planner. This project's for Parsons Lake. They brought in an original forest conservation plan in 2020 where they were required to have 19.76 acres placed in an easement. 14.08 acres of set easement were placed in a priority forest area. We're in support of the relocation of this 0.92 acres because it's going along Bruington Branch Creek, and this is, again, in a priority forest area where previously it was not. So we would recommend this to pass.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dyson. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 37-2023. If you want, sit right here. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 37-2023. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 37-2023. So moved. Second. Any discussion? If you would, could you, would you want to elaborate any further on what you said just previously, or do you feel there's any need to?
I don't believe so. They're relocating it in preparation of Phase Two. You'll likely see the subdivision plan come before Planning Commission soon, and I'm sure there'll be further, once they get further in the planning process, but right now, they're still in the preliminary stages.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of Resolution 37-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Dyson.
Next is Resolution Number 38-2023. This is amending the Position Control Document Exhibit F to create a duplicate department head position for the Department of Corrections. And Pam Olin, Director of Finance, and Donna O'Hara, Director of Human Resources, are here to answer any questions.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 39-2023. Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Shaney.
I have a question, and it's not about the person, it's about the process. And I had some calls at my house, and what other advertising venues did you use for this position besides the county website? And that's the question I want to, no, because, let me sit in on, can you hear me?
We're getting you that answer right now, Councilman Shields.
Okay.
Good evening. We used Twitter, and it was kind of in a transition time where I was coming on board, but we did use the county website. I think we used, we weren't up with Facebook at that point. That's just something that we started since I've been there, but it was kind of my transition time, but I think that's about it.
Let us know who you are, Donna, for public.
I'm sorry, Donna O'Hara, Director of Human Resources in Wycomico County.
Shaney, did you hear that?
I heard, I heard that, but I guess what my problem is, is that I have been spoiled by sitting on the city council, and we did, we went to different venues, like the, maybe the public safety, applications, other institutions of correction, to have a choice of people. And we were always, had a choice.
Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution Thirty-seven dash two thousand twenty-three. Entertaining a motion from council to approve Resolution Thirty-seven dash two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? If you would, could you, would you want to elaborate any further on what you said just previously, or do you feel there's any need to?
I don't believe so. They're relocating it in preparation of Phase Two. You'll likely see the subdivision plan come before Planning Commission soon, and I'm sure there'll be further, once they get further in the planning process, but right now, they're still in the preliminary stages.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of Resolution Thirty-seven dash two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Dyson.
Next is Resolution Number Thirty-eight dash two thousand twenty-three. This is amending the position control document Exhibit F to create a duplicate department head position for the Department of Corrections. And Pam Olin, Director of Finance, and Donna O'Hare, Director of Human Resources, are here to answer any questions.
Entertaining a motion from council to approve Resolution Thirty-eight dash two thousand twenty-three. Second. Yeah, the motion and the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Thirty-eight dash two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number Thirty-nine dash two thousand twenty-three. This is confirming the appointment of Christina M. Tyler as Director of the Department of Corrections, and Mr. Bunky Lufman here, Director of Administration, if you have any questions.
Entertaining a motion from... Entertaining a motion from council to approve Resolution Thirty-nine dash two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. Motion's second. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Shaney.
I have a question, and it's not about the person, it's about the process. And I had some calls at my house, and what other advertising venues did you use for this position besides the county website? And, and that's the question I want to...
If you could, yeah, thank you.
No, because, let me sit in on... Can you hear me?
We're getting, we're getting you that answer right now, Councilwoman Shields.
Okay.
Good evening. We used Twitter, and it was kind of in a transition time where I was coming on board, but we did use the county website. I think we used, we weren't up with Facebook at that point. That's just something that we started since I've been there, but it was kind of my transition time, but I think that's about it.
Let us know who you are, Donna, for public...
I'm sorry, Donna O'Hare, Director of Human Resources, Wacomiko County.
Shaney, did you hear that?
I heard, I heard that, but I guess what my problem is, is that I have been spoiled by sitting on the city council, and we did, we went to different venues, like the, maybe the public safety, occasions, other institutions of correction, to have a choice of, of people. And we were always, had a choice of looking at different resumes. Now, I don't know if this is another question I wanted to know, is this a political appointment or a job search appointment? That's the question I have. Do we do political appointments like they do in D.C.? Or, um, uh... I just don't like the process that we're going through, because I don't like objective things, but I don't have, understand how these people are coming up.
Department heads... Sorry, department heads are appointed by the executive and potentially confirmed by the county council. So this is a department head position as appointed by the executive and potentially going to be confirmed by the county council.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest, in the future, the next election, that we change that, because we're a small county, we don't want to wind up like Washington, D.C. with appointments, and when one political persuasion gets the majority, the majority, the people, I don't know what her political thing is, but I'm, we're concerned about how these people are getting appointed, and other people don't have a chance to even apply because it's already done. And I think the democratic process should be, other venues should be, and other people should be allowed to apply for these positions, so we make sure we get the best of the best for the taxpayers, because we do work for the taxpayers, and some of these taxpayers are questioning, calling me, asking me questions like this, and I'm quite sure others are thinking about it, even don't say it. That's, that's all I'm going to say, and I will be opposing this appointment. I know I won't be, I'll probably be the only one, but the reason is because of process, not because of the person.
I appreciate your, your comments, and certainly, we can advertise more, as Donna said, she wasn't on full-time yet. However, I, just for the record, I have no idea of the political persuasion of Ms. Tyler. However, she has worked at our Wacomiko County facility before and has a great resume that, you know, she was interviewed by this council and, and presenting herself and, and her resume, and we just feel like she's the best choice for the position.
And it did stay posted for over a month out on the county website, which is like one of our, basically our primary, was our primary advertising site at the time, and it's still out there right now. We left it open until today, and it's still, it's still there, so.
Any questions? No? All those in favor of Resolution Thirty-nine dash two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
We have one, one opposed.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number Thirty-nine dash two thousand twenty-three passes. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution Number Forty dash two thousand twenty-three. This is confirming the nomination of Matthew McConaughey as the Health Officer for the Wacomiko County Health Department.
Entertaining a motion from council to approve Resolution Number Forty dash two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion's second. Motion's second. Any discussion? Yes, unfortunately, yes. I have, yeah, sorry. Sometimes I would love to take things off the floor, but we just can't do it. Yeah. No further discussion. All those in favor of Resolution Forty dash two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
The next item for businesses, Resolution Number Forty-one dash two thousand twenty-three. This is declaring that Dynamic Development LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at five-ten West Road in Salisbury, Maryland. In order for a business to qualify for enterprise zone benefits, it must meet one of the two specific statutory requirements, which are that the business must either make an investment in capital improvements of more than fifty thousand, or hire new employees since it's been located in the zone. Dynamic Development LLC is eligible for the enterprise zone benefits because of its investment of more than fifty thousand in the property, and we do have Laura Soper here, Enterprise Zone Coordinator, if you have any questions.
Entertaining a motion from council to approve Resolution Forty-one dash two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Forty-one dash two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Laura.
Okay, the next item is Resolution Number Forty-two dash two thousand twenty-three. This is approving a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for providing cybersecurity equipment and services for the Department of Emergency Services Systems for a period of five years. And we do have Mr. Lorenzo Cropper, Director of Emergency Services, here, if there are any questions.
Entertaining a motion from council to approve Resolution Forty-two dash two thousand twenty-three. Second.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Forty-two, two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is the submission of an appointment to the Local Management Board and an appointment to the Wacomiko County Commission for Women pursuant to Section four thirteen of the Charter of the Act and Count, or, I'm sorry, the County Executive has submitted two individuals for confirmation, one to the Local Management Board and one to the Wacomiko County Commission for Women. The Local Management Board promotes a safe, healthy, and stable environment for all county children and families by achieving a comprehensive system of education, health, and human services whose effectiveness and responsiveness addresses the needs of children and families through public and private inter-agency collaboration. The Commission for Women, which was stated earlier this evening, is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to enriching the lives of women and families by focusing on issues of importance and concern to them, including education, economic matters, healthcare, social issues, and legislation. The Commission advocates for women and advises the county executive and the county government on all matter, matters of concern.
Thank you. Entertaining a motion from council to approve Resolution Forty-three dash two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay. Resolution Number Forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three is confirming the appointment of Mary Ashanti as a member of the Wacomiko County Local Management Board, also known as the Wacomiko Partnership for Families and Children.
Entertaining a motion to approve Resolution Forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Motion passes, the motion passes. Resolution Number Forty-four dash two thousand twenty-three passes. I would like to thank Ms. Ward and Mary Ashanti for volunteering and undertaking these two committees. We really do appreciate your, your support and your help.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. You want to come up? I'm kind of interested, interested to hear what you may have to say. We may have to, we may have to rescind our motion.
Yeah, I'm sure not. Bruce Robson, Salisbury. So in terms of when, when people are, are recommended, you know, like these, these folks for positions, how does, does the public know and what information can they access to find out about the nominees?
Ms. Hurley?
So actually, most of the vacancies are gone through the County Executive's office, so you would want to reach out to County Executive's office to see if there's any vacancies open. There's also a website on the Wacomiko County page titled Boards and Commissions. You can read about each one of our boards and commissions on that website. There's a little synopsis for each one.
Okay, so in terms of knowing who current, like in advance, knowing who the nominees were tonight, and finding out something about them, so felt, you know, did have concerns or questions, how would, did I...
So the nominees are submitted to the county council from the county executive's office, so that would be something that you would need to talk to our county executive about.
So I would need to reach out to the executive office to find out who current nominees for different positions are, and then find out who...
You make a very good point, and there could be a way we could approve it, you know, maybe ahead of time, putting it out there a little broader, perhaps on the webs, on the webpage, so that people will, will know something's available, because I don't know if it's posted, it's available. The positions and the organizations are certainly there, but you might be right. I don't know how, how well the counties, I've never asked, in all these years, I've never asked of, of our outreach for the committees, but maybe there's a way we can improve it, and after having, after having received the, any requests from individuals, I would think, yes, it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to post it on the website as well, to say, these are the people who are, are looking for, are looking to be on these boards, these appointments.
Yeah, I sort of feel like it's like the, the request earlier about which you addressed tonight, in terms of somebody coming up and giving a little synopsis of what you're about to vote on. You know, I think it's...
Sure.
It'd be helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's about a week, maybe. See, about a week, yeah.
Jamie Dykes, State's Attorney. I came from Annapolis and had a few minutes before going home to dinner, so I thought I'd stop in. I wanted to publicly thank all of law enforcement, all the first responders, and civilians who assisted last night with the trooper's treatment and apprehension of and identification of suspects. As you all know, this is the third officer who was shot or killed in the line of duty in, I believe, three calendar years, but probably twenty-three months. We are, their, law enforcement is facing challenges like they've never faced before, and soon, the entire community will feel those in a way that, that we haven't before. And I'm grateful for everyone who is supportive, and that includes you, for holding people accountable for offenses, so that we can keep our streets safe, so that's all I...
I have to say, Attorney, could you just briefly explain, just briefly, what happened last night? I, I don't know if everyone does.
Yes, a sergeant with the Maryland State Police was traveling into Wacomiko County on the Vienna Bridge, saw a vehicle occupied by three people who was committing not insignificant traffic violations. Trooper attempted to stop. On that vehicle, trooper attempted a passenger-side approach, and the trooper was shot three times. Trooper was shot three times. His vest saved him. It's rare that the good guys get so lucky, but he was, had suffered what I think are fairly characterized as minor injuries. He was able to identify the suspect vehicle and the suspect who was the shooter. Delmore PD became aware of that suspect vehicle description, was able to locate the suspect, and, and was able to stop, or didn't actively make a stop, but was able to resolve that situation, is, is what I'll say at this point.
Very much appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Yes, no, 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 no. I'm looking forward to get some sleep in my two hours. I used to be able to handle that when I was younger, a little better, but anyway, I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I just want to follow up, just on that. Yeah, no, I'm, no, I'm going to go ahead and go, just to follow up with Jamie. So just to, to go off of that, so again, thank God the trooper is okay. Earlier today, I received a message from Trooper Phillips' wife thanking the county for its support last night. As Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration, Sheriff Mike Lewis, State's Attorney Jamie Dykes, and I made our way to the emergency room to support Trooper Phillips and his family. Later, I received a call from Governor Wes Moore, checking in with me, making sure that we were okay at the county level. He also planned to reach out to Trooper Phillips as well, and I just want to say that here in Wacomiko, we have the best protection between Wacomiko County Sheriff's Office and the allied agencies that keep us safe on a daily basis. Last night proved once again that between the prayers, shared posts, calls, messages, the twenty-three-hundred reactions, the thousands of comments, that we are a community that backs the blue. And in Wacomiko, we stand with law enforcement. And so I stand before you here as your county executive, and I want to emphasize that this anti-police rhetoric has to stop, and to reiterate the words of our State's Attorney, that our law enforcement officers deserve better, and our communities deserve better, but what are we willing to do about it? And so last night, we got very lucky. And so I just want to say, God bless to all of our first responders and the sacrifices they make each and every day.
My name is Mary Ashanti. I just, I'm resident in Wacomiko County. But first, I just want to thank God for the opportunity to be here, and I, I pray for the, the folks that are on the county council that are, are still ill, and, and I pray for their full recovery. I, I pray for the family of this officer and, and the, also, the law enforcement community in this trying time. I, I, I came up to talk about another situation in reference to education. Over the past few months, since about December of two thousand twenty-one, on three occasions, and this is in reference to the Kent County, Kent Island School in Queen Anne's County Athletic Committee, Team in Wacomiko County School, especially Parkside High School. Our community, the black community, is truly upset because they do not think that our black athletes are being taken care of. They do not trust the Board of Education or the superintendent because of the poor judgments that they have made in this past three years. So some of the questions that come up, it said that student misconduct and inappropriate behavior related to racial discrimination, harassment, bullying, and other untoward pervasive conduct have been ongoing. The superintendent of Wacomiko County Schools and the Board of Education failed to cause the sensation of racial activities with the Queen Anne County School students, and the question is why? There existed a hostile environment and relationship between Wacomiko County and the Queen Anne County Schools, which were untenable, and the superintendent and the Board of Education failed miserly to alleviate these conditions. The question is still why? It is obvious that Wacomiko County School Superintendent and the Board of Education devalue our black student athletes and cause racism to permeate the system. The question again is why? The school superintendent and the Wacomiko County Board of Education are responsible for mental anguish, trepidation, and duress of our black students, and this had been felt continually, and the answer is again, question again is why? It is obvious that the superintendent and the Wacomiko County Board of Education reticent in resolving this racially motivated and discrimination environment. Again, why? At some point, before we got into three years of this, at some point, the Wacomiko County Public School should have said, our students will not go to, to Queen Anne County because it's a hostile environment. The blacks, the black athletes have been spit upon, been called nigger. In one situation, the Kent Island High School player suspended a monkey with a hangman's rope around the neck and over the banner of Dr. Martin Luther King's Jr. At another time... At another time, Black History Month was called Monkey History Month. Parents have sent letters, and I've seen these letters, to the Superintendent of Schools about these issues. And, and the media even said that somebody from the Board of Education said that this has been going on. Okay, if you know this has been going on, why haven't you stopped it? So we no longer have trust in the Board of Education. That's why we're sharing this with you. We are also asking the governor to intervene and make Wycomico County Board of Education and school system keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shoney.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
You may, you may have to stay pretty close to it. It doesn't seem like it's too, too strong tonight. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Weeks. Um, I am one of the 13% of black students on my campus in, in Wycomico. As I hope we know, I hope you all know, that black people experience white supremacy, anti-blackness, and racism in every aspect of our lives, from, from the killing of black people from, from police such as Tyree Nichols and Keenan Anderson. I'm here because white supremacy continues to spread on my campus and Wycomico County has failed to hold my campus accountable to the racism that seeks to hold us down daily. I'm asking for Wycomico County to create a race and equity based commission to increase accountability for, for black issues. Black issues in Wycomico need, need black solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kiara DeShiel. I've been, I've experienced homelessness since, since the age of 18, the last three years of my life. I've been discriminated against for not only being a woman of color, being a proud member of LGBTQ community. I think, I know that my experience would have been different had the county sat there and held shelters accountability to not only to, against race, against the fact of me being who I am, how I express who I am. And as a member of the Wycomico County, I formally request that there needs to be a race and equity commission as far as for not only myself, so that I can feel safe here to raise kids one day, and as far as other people that I have witnessed, that I've seen, this goes as a constant issue and I feel as if not only it's being overlooked and ignored at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, my name is Amber Green. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Phoenix Youth Project where we service, um, Wycomico County, Worcester County, and Somerset County youth between the ages of 14 and 24. Uh, we provide direct services to homeless youth community in the, um, in the area. And what we find is that homeless youth and the homeless population, um, African Americans are overrepresented in that population. African Americans make about 13% of the general population of, um, America, but make up 40% of the homeless population. Um, I am very happy to know that our county does have a police accountability board, but we need accountability on the county on all fronts, including education, as we've heard from, um, Mary, uh, Ms. Mary about, uh, the stuff that's going on with schools and as Councilwoman Ms. Shields has said in regards to the appointment of department heads. I do believe, as well as, um, a lot of other young people in the community, that our county is in desperate need of a race and equity commission here on the county so we can discuss those hard conversations, but really put black voices in front of these black issues so we can find black solutions. And thank you for this time and I really do hope that you listen to our words.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'll make it short and sweet, I promise. Um, Executive Giordano, members of the council, and for those of you that don't know who I am, my name is Lynn Mitchell. I live in Powellville, which is on the east side of the county. I am here tonight to express my hope for a playground area to be constructed at the Atkins Mill Pond. It is a four acre complex in the, that the county owns and it could be used for our kids, uh, which we have nothing within a five mile radius. Um, I met with Executive Giordano recently and she was very receptive to my concern. So here's what I know so far. I have seven full pages of support signatures from local residents in favor of the addition. I have letters from the fire department, the real attendance for support, and also a letter coming from the Powellville Church. I have spoken with Councilwoman Baker and have his support. I know the house located on the premises was supposed to have been torn down five years ago. Mrs. Giordano has been in touch with the fire department and other authorities about the removal. That would give us ample space. I believe there has been some conversations with Steve Miller at Park and Recs. Um, we do know that that needs to be followed up at some point in time. Our community could possibly raise the money to help with ground cover or mow if needed. There are grants and project open space funding, I'm sure, if we were able to find someone to help us with that. Our community would be willing to help with the upkeep and the cleaning of the area. I will personally go down there and make sure trash is picked up, if that's what we have to do. I know District One has also requested new playground equipment, um, you know, so maybe it's a team effort. I'm requesting support from the council, please, to approve funds within the upcoming budget for a commercial grade set with a few swings. There are a few members in our community who want to be involved with the location, size, and design based on the amount allotted. I'm looking forward with optimism to your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments? Have you, no, okay. Uh, entertaining motion then to adjourn so we can go into open work session. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Means adjourned. First item on the open work session is the proposed, uh, regulations for solar energy systems. Uh, Ms. Carter, are you here? And Clark Meadows? I don't see Clark. There she is. How are you? There's Clark. We're getting there. And Mr. Illuminati is here.